Just get to the message and I see the recording has started. Good evening, everyone. It is Wednesday, July the ninth. I now call this regularly scheduled virtual meeting of the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'll now call the role of commissioners. Commissioner Jacek.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Present.
Commissioner Geiser.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Present.
Commissioner Banka.
Present.
Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
And Commissioner Walls is also present. We have a full voting quorum of seven members in attendance tonight. The pledge of allegiance will not be said as this meeting is virtual. Move on to the approval of the minutes for June the twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Everyone received a draft of those minutes. Did you all have an opportunity to read them? Okay, are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the chair moves to approve the minutes as presented without objection. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June the twenty fifth without objection as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Is there any objection? Without objection, the minutes from the twenty fifth will be approved. Tonight, we've got two items of general business, items eight A and eight B. The chair moves to approve the agenda as presented without objection. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Jacek. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented without objection. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Without discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the agenda will be adopted as presented. I'll now read a summary of our policies and procedures for this evening's meeting. Please make sure your home or computer microphone is on mute unless you're speaking. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is a quasi judicial hearing. There is no swearing in of those who will give testimony, but it is presumed that all parties are telling the truth. When addressing the commission as an applicant or their representative, please state your first and last name, as well as the organization that you're representing. And you may additionally state if you are an Aurora resident. If you are addressing the commission as a member of the general public for public testimony, please state your first and last name, and if you are an Aurora resident. For each agenda item, there will be an initial presentation by city staff. Afterward, commissioners may ask questions of staff. Discussion of agenda items by commissioners will be conducted only following a motion and a second. Following the staff presentation, the applicant or their representative may choose to make a presentation or answer questions. The applicant will have ten minutes for their presentation. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. Members of the public that have signed up to speak will each have three minutes to speak on the agenda item during this public comment period. It is asked that only new information be presented. The same argument should not be repeated. Commissioners may ask questions of the public following their comments. After public comments, the applicant will have five minutes to address any public comments. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. The chair will ensure all commissioners have no further questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then call for the question. After a motion has been made and seconded, the commissioners will then discuss the case amongst themselves. After the discussion, the chair will call the question. Commissioners are finders of fact and will vote based on their evaluation of the evidence presented as compared to code section one forty six. All rulings by the Planning and Zoning Commission are normally final. Exceptions are zoning map amendments, zoning code amendments, and comprehensive plan amendments that need city council approval. Decisions by the commission can be appealed to the city council by presenting a written appeal to the city manager within ten calendar days of the public hearing. City council also has the discretion to call up any case whether an appeal has been made or not. Notices for this virtual meeting were published, posted to the city website, and the development projects were posted with signs on the properties. Notices were also mailed to adjacent landowners per city requirements. Okay, this evening's first case is agenda item eight A. For the record, we will first record commissioner visits to the site. Commissioner Banka, Commissioner Jacek, Commissioner Bush, Commissioner Geiser, Commissioner Hogan, Commissioner Riley, and Commissioner Walls. Agenda item eight A is the Central Community Park Conceptual Master Plan located in Ward Five. And our case manager this evening is Nicole Ankeny. I apologize, Nicole, if I butchered your last name. The applicant is a City of Aurora Prose. Nicole, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to have Trent Woolley, one of our senior landscape architects, actually provide the presentation this evening. Trent, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Thank you.
We appreciate this time this evening, and this project may look very familiar to some of the commissioners. We did bring this to Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session back on March the twelfth. And we had previously had a public hearing with the Parks Recreation, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And then it was brought to our attention that we needed to also have a public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that's why we are presenting this tonight. So I apologize if this is a little repetitive for anyone, but we do appreciate your time. Again, we're presenting the Central Recreation, I'm sorry, the Central Community Park Master Plan, and we are seeking an approval to move it on to city council. Again, my name is Trent Woolley. I'm a senior landscape architect in Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. And I work in the Planning, Designing, and Construction Division. And Nicole Ankeny is our manager for Planning, Design, and Construction. And we are working with a consultant firm called The Arcatare Group out of Littleton. Our PROS Dedication Development Criteria Manual does have a lot of different benchmarks that we have to meet to receive approval on a master plan, and we have met these. They go, they run the gamut from the beginning of site design is appropriate. We believe that it is. All the uses are compatible, and they're adequately buffered from any adjacent uses. We also make sure that the design adequately addresses any concerns of any of the adjacent property owners. And then we also do look at the site to make sure that it does support the transportation modes and uses. So how do people get in and out of the site? And then we also have looked at the parking onsite that's available for bicycles and motor vehicles. Of course, life safety issues have been addressed. Architectural themes doesn't always necessarily apply to a park. In this particular case, we do have the Central Recreation Center onsite, and it has basically its own theme. But we will not do anything within this park that will contradict that theme. And then, of course, we are limited in height on some of the structures that we can install, which we are staying well below. And then we feel that the details are there, and we can provide all the information to get a positive recommendation tonight. Just from a standpoint of context, Central Recreation, the center is actually located between Tower Road and Buckley Road and between Isleth and Hamden. Typically, people refer to it as Tower and Telluride, or Telluride and Vassar. In the middle of the site is the rec center. Most of the park building will occur west of the rec center and a little bit to the east. We did hold a public outreach, actually, three public outreach sessions. They were three public meetings. We also had an Engage Aurora page, and it is still active on the website. Just so everybody understands, we had a mailing list for this particular project of just over seven thousand addresses. And then we also reached out to forty-two neighborhood and/or HOA groups within a two-mile radius of the park site. Public meeting number one, PROS, typically, we spend time with the public in this meeting just explaining what a community park can be, what it can't be, different things that we kind of vision from the standpoint of staff, as well as we take input from the citizens that attend our particular meetings. This particular meeting, we had thirty in-person attendees. And then all of these public meetings were followed up with what we call a post-meeting survey. So we'll ask certain questions like, what do you like? What do you not like? What are some things that you would love to see near park? Things like that. And so the second public meeting was held on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. We had fifty-four attendees. And again, at this particular meeting, we provide concepts. So this is the part where we really kind of get into the meat of the design, what's going on. And at this particular meeting, we presented two concepts to the public. We went over both concepts with the public, and they were given the opportunity to provide feedback on both concepts. And as you all know, a lot of times what happens is people will make an amalgamation or combination of both concepts to get that final concept. And then that's when we presented at the public meeting number three, we present a final concept. And again, the public is invited, the public is allowed to make comments even on that final one, just to make sure that we're trying to hit all of the all the key things that people are asking for us to do. And so tonight, that's what we're proposing. This is what was finalized after that third public meeting with our consulting team. And again, the Central Recreation Center is located here in the middle. We have a court area to the east. This is self-storage, if you're not familiar with the site. And we have some pickleball, we have some tennis courts, and some basketball. We'll go into this a little bit more detail here in a minute. We have a playground area with a little bouldering area, an open play lawn. And then we also have a large picnic shelter, several small shade shelters in the area. And then we have a wetland area that's being converted from an old irrigation pond that will be removed, and it'll be replaced with this wetland area. Looking at the site a little bit closer, we're starting on the west side. And this is that wetland area. We'll have a pedestrian bridge, actually, two. We have one here and then one over here. We have a, we have the West Tollgate Creek that comes into the site from the south and meanders over here and then empties back into the Hutchinson Trail over here. And then we also have No Name Creek that comes in from the east and empties in right here. We'll slow the water down. We'll provide areas for the water to pool. We'll provide areas where the water can inundate the area through here to provide a nice wetland habitat for plants and animals. We do have trails that people can get in, get close, and experience the wetland as well. We have a small shade structure planned here, as well as we are making allowances for a public art piece to be included on the project. So we're working with Roberta Bloom and Art in Public Places. And we are working currently, and we should select an artist for this project later this month. Moving more into the play area, if you will, again, we have a large bluegrass open space here. We have two playgrounds separated by a small wall. And again, it's a climbable wall. It's a wall that kids can play on, maybe between the two spaces. And then we also have a bouldering area. The boulding area is just, you know, where we'll have typically, they're manufactured to look like rocks, but they're climbable, playable, and it's a great experience for the kids. We also are planning a plumbed restroom onsite. And then, of course, I did make reference to a large group picnic shelter here in the center, as well as several smaller shade structures. And then the last piece on the east is our court area. Four pickleball courts, two tennis courts, two basketball courts. And again, we have about three shade structures in this area. One thing that we also did, and this would be something that would be a later phase in the project, we did look to see if we could add some additional parking if needed, because that was a concern that was brought to our attention. Do we have enough parking at the site? We can put in approximately another twenty-five to thirty parking spaces. Our consultants put together some aerial views or some kind of bird's eye drawings just to give everyone kind of a sense of what the site might look like. And again, this is the court area near the, excuse me, the self-storage. And then you can also see the playground area and the bluegrass lawn here in the center. And then, of course, the wetland area with the two pedestrian bridges. And as the creek meanders through that site there. The close-up, again, the tennis courts, basketball, and pickleball. You have some shade structures. We are planning to light these particular facilities so that they, people can play later into the evening. The lights would shut down when the park closes, which is eleven o'clock. Typical park hours are five AM to eleven PM. Here's an aerial view. This is as if you're standing on the actual rec center looking kind of towards the west. And this is the playground area here in the center. You can see the boulders and the bouldering area. The large shade structure or picnic pavilion, I'm sorry. And then a couple of the smaller shade structures here. And you can see the wetland area in the background there. Looking back towards the rec center, as well as that large picnic shelter, you can see several tables underneath that. And then, of course, the playground area. Here's an overview, getting a little bit closer look of the actual wetland area. Again, West Tollgate Creek coming in, and then also No Name Creek coming in. This is more of a ground level rendering. This is looking back towards that shade structure that would be close to the wetland area. Again, some micro pools, the ability to walk along the wetland area, interact with it if you desire to walk down to that area. And again, this is just an artist's representation of what maybe that artwork might look like in that particular area, if that's where it's chosen to be placed. We have the pedestrian bridge. This is considered a low-water crossing. So again, all the low flow goes underneath. If there's any type of a flood event, it would go over the top of that trail. Some boulders along this edge of this little micro pool. You can sit along there, and then more boulders kind of as you go up towards the picnic shelter. Just an image of one of the pedestrian bridges. And so again, I already alluded to the fact, on March the fifth, we went to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We did hold a public hearing at that point in time. They issued an advisory opinion of approval. And then we, on the twelfth of March, we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session. We presented the same presentation, and again, it was, they gave us an advisory opinion at that point in time, and it was approved by the commission as well. We then took it to the PFQL Committee Meeting, and it was approved to go to city council. And that's at the point when it was determined that we needed to go back a couple of steps and meet with, of course, where we're at tonight with the Planning and Zoning Commission, with a public hearing. And then we'll ask for their advisory opinion. If it is a positive approval, then we will move on towards a study session with city council, which we're going to try and make the July twenty-eighth date for study session for city council. And if we make that, then we would be hopefully approved to move on to a final city council approval at a regular meeting. And our schedule would hit the August the eleventh date for final city council approval at that particular stage. So we will take any questions or comments at this point in time. And again, I'm not running the meeting, so Commissioner Walls, if you, if you need to do something different. But ultimately, what we're asking tonight is to consider, does the Planning and Zoning Commission wish to recommend approval of the Central Community Park Master Plan, sending the plan to city council for consideration? And that's the end of our presentation.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation, Trent. I'll open the floor for questions from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Geiser.
Yeah, I want to know when construction would begin, if it was approved, and roughly what is the cost of this project?
I'll take, I'll tackle the, the timing piece. We are basically, this is master plan, so we'd have to go through a rather lengthy phase of design document development, as well as construction document. The earliest that we'd probably start would potentially be towards the end of next year with construction. And again, depending on budget cost, things along those lines, this may have to be phased in a couple of different phases. And then, Nicole, if you want to talk to the, the budget piece.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Nicole Ankeny, manager of Planning, Design, and Construction. We've got approximately six million to five to six million dollars budgeted for this project. At this point in time, cost estimates are indicating that the overall build-out is around ten to twelve million dollars. That does not completely include all of the Aurora water-related items around the wetland area. So we are looking at whether or not we're going to phase this in construction, and we're also reviewing grant opportunities to try to expand our, or utilize our city tax dollars and maximize those seeking outside funding sources.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the commission for staff? Okay, seeing none, Stephanie, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on this agenda item?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, without any public testimony, I give one final opportunity for questions in the hearing. Seeing none from the commission, I'll close this portion of the hearing and entertain a motion on agenda item eight A. Commissioner Banka.
Right. Regarding agenda item eight A conceptual master plan, based on the staff recommendation, the presentations, and discussion at this evening's public hearing, I move to recommend approval to the city, Aurora City Council, of Central Community Park Master Plan for the reasons stated in the staff report. And I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved to approve agenda item eight A. Is there a second? Commissioner Bush, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve eight A. I'll open the floor for discussion by the commission. I'll start us off and say, I'm really excited to see this project move forward. I was very excited back in March, and now that a little bit of more public comment has been received. And actually, I was surprised from those numbers. It looks like you had a decent amount of public comment, which those meetings can be sometime here or there. So I'm glad that you guys received a lot of public comment. I think this is a great conceptual master plan. It's given me feelings of Utah Park, which I live right next to Utah Park, in the way that you've worked with that kind of watershed area. And I think it will be exciting for that community. The elementary school right across the street to the north is going to benefit from that play area, the bouldering for possibly after-school activities, things like that. I think this will be great for the community. I'd like to see this move forward. Further comment from the commission? Seeing none, I will call the role. Commissioner Jacek.
Approve.
Commissioner Bush.
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser.
Approve.
Commissioner Riley.
Approve.
Commissioner Banka.
Approve.
Commissioner Hogan.
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls also votes to approve. That's seven votes to approve. We will recommend approval to city council on agenda item eight A. Okay, moving on, agenda item eight B. Recording for the minutes, Commissioner Site Visits to eight B. Commissioner Jacek, Commissioner Banka, Commissioner Geiser, Commissioner Riley, and Commissioner Walls is also very familiar with the site. Eight B is the Vasa Fitness Gardens at Havana Conditional Use located in Ward Four. Our case manager for this agenda item is Ben Bravenek, and the applicant is Vasa Fitness. Ben, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ben Bravenek, presenting for staff. Tonight for your review is Vasa Fitness Gardens at Havana Conditional Use application. The applicant, Vasa Fitness, requests the approval of a conditional use to allow indoor recreation within the planned development zone district. The zoning standards are determined within the Gardens on Havana Master Plan, where indoor recreation is allowed as a conditional use. The site is located within Use Area A, Commercial Large Format Mixed Use, and the City Corridor Place Type. The subject site is located on the southeast corner of South Ironton Street and East Arizona Place within the Gardens on Havana Plaza. Here is an aerial of the subject building. Across East Arizona Place to the north is a Sprouts Grocery Store. Two other commercial tenants occupy the southern remainder of the building. To the east is multifamily, and the west is an existing shared parking lot that the proposal will utilize as part of their parking agreement. The site is surrounded by the PD Zone District for the Gardens on Havana Master Plan. The land uses in the master plan call out for Use Area A, Commercial Large Format Mixed Use to the north, south, and east, and Use Area B, Mixed Use, across East Arizona Place to the west. This is a site photo facing east from the parking lot of the existing building when it was occupied by Dick's Sporting Goods. Here is a view of the site taken from South Juliet Street facing east, facing west, sorry. This is the rear of the building facing the multifamily. Three adjacent property owners and eighteen registered neighborhood organizations were notified of this application. A neighborhood meeting was not held. There was one comment from a nearby resident that expressed support, stating it would be a good use for this space. The proposed use is identified as needing a conditional use approval per the Planned Development Zoning Regulations outlined within the Gardens on Havana Master Plan. There are no use-specific standards for indoor recreation within the UDO or Plan Development Document. So the conditional use criteria was the main point of discussion during this review. The application followed all standards found in the UDO, as well as the Gardens on Havana Plan Development. The proposal meets the intent of the City Corridor Place Type and provides a use beneficial to the area while utilizing a vacant large tenant space. Indoor recreation is subject to the same parking requirements as large-scale retail, which the previous tenant was defined as. The business will rely on the existing shared parking, resulting in no significant impact on the site's overall parking capacity. Because the nearby multifamily residential area is located behind the building, away from the entrance and parking, the hours of operation five AM to twelve AM will will not negatively impact the surrounding area. Overall, staff finds in compliance with the conditional use criteria in section one four six, S five point four point three point A point three, the Unified Development Ordinance. The application complies with indoor recreation requirements in the UDO and Gardens on Havana Plan Development. The application is consistent with the City Corridor Comprehensive Plan as a commercial service. There is adequate capacity with city infrastructure to serve the proposed development, and the building properly mitigates any potential adverse impacts introduced by the conditional use. In conclusion, staff finds that agenda item eight B meets the criteria for approval and supports the conditional use for indoor recreation within the PD Zone District, part of the Gardens on Havana Master Plan. With that, I'll open it up for questions. The applicant is also present and available for any questions as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for the presentation, Ben. I'll open the floor for questions from the commission. Without, um, did you, I'm sorry, did you say the applicant has a presentation or is just available for questions?
They are just available for questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the commission? Commissioner Hogan.
I do have a question for the applicant. I know that you have several of these in the metro area. Are they, A, are they individually owned like a franchise? And B, do you plan to keep open surrounding facilities like this? Or are you planning to close and then reopen this one in the Gardens on Havana?
All of our locations are corporately owned. We have sixty-one in total. We're based in Denver. Aurora has been very, very good to us in our gyms. Our gyms in Aurora are all overperforming. And this is an additional one. There are zero plans to close. Any other ones?
Thank you.
And for the record, Michelle, could we please get your name? And optionally, you can state if you're an Aurora resident or not.
My name is Michelle Dodd. I'm the General Counsel and Senior Vice President of Development. I'm not an Aurora resident. I reside in Chicago, Illinois.
Great, thank you. Further questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Stephanie, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on eight B?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, final opportunity for questions of staff or the applicant from the commission. Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and entertain a motion on agenda item eight B. Commissioner Banka.
All right. Sorry. Regarding agenda item eight B, conditional use for indoor recreation, based on the staff recommendation, the presentations and discussion at this evening's public hearing, I move to approve the conditional use for indoor recreation within the Gardens on Havana Master Plan because the proposal complies with the requirements of code one four six dash five dot four dot three dot A dot three of the Unified Development Ordinance for the reasons stated in the staff report. And I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved to approve agenda item eight B. Is there a second? Commissioner Hogan, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item eight B. I'll open the floor for discussion.
This is Commissioner Jacek. I'm really pleased that this turned around so fast. Back in two thousand and eight, when we were just starting out, we had the economic downturn, and I know some of the contracts said that if any of the big boxes pulled out, that we could not do certain things. And we also had to abandon the residential over retail along Main Street at the Gardens. So I'm really glad that Vassa is going in and Dick's moved out quickly, and it's turned around. I think it's going to be a good move.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacek. Further discussion? Commissioner Banka.
Um, I just ditto, you know, there's nothing worse than large-area vacant buildings. And I know that there's two or three of the Vassas in my neck of the woods. And the parking lots are always packed, always packed. So I think that's a great thing, and look forward to this.
Thank you, Commissioner Banka. I joined those comments as well. Even though I'll be abstaining because of my position on the Havana bid, I, I think that this is a great proposal to backfill the space. There's ample parking. And this will bring great foot traffic to the Gardens on Havana. And this will bring great foot traffic to the Gardens on Havana. Commissioner Geiser?
Yeah, as a previous owner of a number of recreational sites, I'm always happy to see more of them join in. And I'm very excited about this, coming to this area of Aurora.
Thank you, Commissioner Geiser. Further discussion on the adoption of 8B? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Jettich?
Approve.
Commissioner Bush?
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
Approve.
Commissioner Banker?
Approve.
Commissioner Hogan?
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls will abstain. 8B is approved with six votes to approve. Okay, Stephanie, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak on non-agenda items?
No Chair, we do not.
Okay, I will open the floor for comments by Commissioners or any miscellaneous items of business. I will start us off in providing a very warm welcome to the public of our newest commission member. Retired Colonel Mike Riley is joining us. He has just been confirmed, I think about a month ago or so, recently by city council and appointed to the Planning Commission. Mike brings us a wealth of and a breadth of knowledge and being very locally involved. And I'm sure that the commission will benefit and the public will benefit from his sort of breadth of knowledge and experience. So officially, welcome to the team, Mike. It's great to have you with us and it's great to have a full commission again.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or announcements by Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our report by our Planning Division Manager, Brandon. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Not a lot to report in terms of administrative approvals since our last meeting. I think we had one commercial parking lot up near the airport, Catawaba and 63rd Avenue. And let's see, the two appeals, one for the QT and the cottages, infill development are scheduled for council on the 14th. But my understanding is both will be asked for an additional time. Cottage is still working on their site plan and I'm not sure on QT, but I think that was per, per management on that one. So that's where those are. Probably some of you may have attended PED this morning, saw the updates there. And so that's all I have for my report. If you have any questions, I would try to answer them.
Thanks, Brandon. Questions for Brandon? Sunny?
Um, I do have a question. I, I was not able to get into the meeting, so I did it on my phone and and was it, so I was there. You just didn't see my smiling face, but anyway, I do have a question. There was a comment made about some of the state, the legislation in the state and something to do with the fact we have to build 500 and some units and we're going to have to revamp that. And I'm not real sure that I fully understood that. I know it's tied to one of the, you know, recent house bills that passed, but I don't remember which bill number. Brandon, do you know what they were? I, I'm sure you know.
I'm lucky I know, but it's Prop 123, which is not one of the more recent ones. It's like from maybe three or four years ago where there's kind of two components where there's kind of an opting into creating a target for affordable units increase. And so that's that number that was quoted as well as, as some process expectations. And so that has been plugging along since that time.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions for Brandon? Go ahead, Commissioner Hogan.
Brandon, frankly, because Parks was a part of our presentation tonight. What is this new, either a policy or a manual? And I didn't know if it was even referred to tonight that Parks is working on or that you're working on in conjunction with Parks? What's kind of, that seemed to be the last
Yeah.
deal.
Well, they have a manual that exists and like any code, you know, it comes time to update it. And, and so that is the manual slash, I call it a code, where some of the approaches to dedication and expectations for dedicated land and all those things are, are kind of laid out as, as an extension of, of code. And so, yeah, it's a really big project, you know, to look at. How do we want to look at Parks space? Moving forward.
So Commissioner Walls, I see that Nicole Ankeny is still on the screen. So if you could maybe update us as far as what the plan is and really what the timing is of this and how this could change or not change how Parks is directed related to planning and planning commission.
And Brandon, I'll give you the option to yield to Nicole if you'd like.
I will yield. Thank you.
Thank you all. Again, Nicole Ankeny, manager of Planning, Design and Construction for the Parks Recreation and Open Space Department. Yes, we are finalizing a contract with Logan Simpson as a consulting firm. They are going to be leading the effort for us and we are updating what is the 2021 PROS Dedication and Development Criteria Manual. I would equate that as being very similar to the roadway manual or the drainage manual. So it's an essentially a code extension of the UDO. Because we have not done an update since 2021, some of the primary factors are going to be ensuring that all the water conservation ordinances and efforts that were put into play in August of 2022 by Aurora Water, that our new standards and specs are compliant with those. We're also going to be evaluating the fee structure and ensuring that we have the right amount of flexibility when it comes to development. And because that's one of the things that we have been asked of the development community is finding the right balance of requirements versus a little bit of flexibility. So those are probably two of the main factors. And we are really seeking to, to bring this up to date. We try to do some routine updates, as you can imagine. In this case, because it has been a number of years, we are going to do a pretty extensive review of the manual and we anticipate this process taking about 18 months. The development community will also have some involvement. There will likely be focus groups and so forth with members of, of the community to ensure that we're on the right track.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions for Brandon? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our city attorney report. And Lena is out tonight and filling her little Hollywood square on her screen. This evening is Michelle Gardner, who's another city attorney assistant. Michelle, or Assistant City Attorney, sorry, there's an important distinction there.
No worries. Thank you for welcoming me. I'm covering for Lena. No report. Thank you.
Okay, any question for the city's attorney, city attorney's office? All right, thank you, Michelle, for filling in. Okay, guys, any final announcements before we adjourn? Seeing none, I move that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Riley. It's been moved and seconded. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.
All right, goodbye.
Thanks.